I'd like to call this borough council meeting from November seventeenth, twenty twenty to orders and begin with President Leggins followed by Mumonson. Our House of Representatives is the body of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Senator Weber.
Here.
Vice Senator Miller.
Here.
Councilwoman Menager.
Councilwoman.
Councilman Menager.
Present.
Councilman Melman.
Here.
Councilman Pelman.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Solicitor Cohen.
Here.
Chief Myers.
Here.
Chief Snack.
Here.
Auntie Wardle.
Here.
Manager for this.
Here.
Assistant Manager Boyer. Leave your board.
Thank you very much. Are there any guests this evening? None, thank you. Are there any citizens' comments or requests at this time? Yes, sir. Can you come up to the microphone, keep me ringing the desk, and tell us what's your...
Thank you. Mike Murka, five oh five South Market Street. Two different topics that I'd like to raise. I don't relish being the one always here, but if there's nobody else here, I'm glad to do it. Every person here complaining about a concern, there's forty, fifty people sitting at home in file, divided for words, talking about it online. So first, I'd like to revisit a topic of oversized trucks that I've raised here to council. I'd like to thank Councilman Booker and Chief Myers for their concern in addressing this issue. I have seen the police doing the work that is needed to enforce this, and I appreciate that. I want to say thank you. I also understand there was a... to be a meeting between borough members as well as Upper Allen and Representative Delosier, and I am hoping to hear some information from the results of that survey. That's one. And second, a concern, a question about leaf pickup in the borough. According to the borough website, they're supposed to be giving on a weekly basis from October nineteenth. I can speak for my residents and my daughters who also live in the borough, one pickup the entire time since that has begun. I know we've also been subject to an additional stormwater management fee, which I'm sure additional leaves are not helping that case very much at all. And upon my daughter calling the borough, asking for information about this, she was advised that she could just bag the leaves themselves, but it's clear on the borough website that that's... the sanitation will pick that up. So since we're paying for the service, I'd just like to understand when that would be occurring and what other concerns are happening that is not causing that to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does someone need to talk to you within the next day or two to address your concerns?
Thank you.
For going that. There are some underlying issues with regard to leaf pickup, which I'm sure they'll explain to you, but it is being done as we speak, but probably not quite as efficiently as some would like, so we will contact you. Thank you for your concerns. Any other citizens' comments? Any correspondence?
Yeah, I have two pieces of correspondence, sir. One of them was handed to me tonight, so I had a good chance to get it out to everybody, and the other one came in actually Friday, so after the package went out. This one is from Brenda Zacks on three seventeen West Green Street. She tried to contact the borough a couple times through emails, and apparently they bounced back, or she tried to go through the website, and that doesn't always work. She basically is concerned about the speed of cars on West Green Street going out towards the park, and she was wondering if it could be posted at twenty-five miles per hour like over on New York Street. So she just brought that in tonight and discussed that, so I'll send out copies of that to everybody. I know that that street is pretty heavily traveled. People are using it to cut around the red lights since the repining. So there's... and they're trying to beat the train whenever they get the train on New York Street. So that's something I'll share with Chief, and we'll take a look at it. The other one is another victim of COVID. During the Roger, the decision to cancel the Kennisburg New Year's Eve wrench drop was not easy to make. This decision was made due to the various ramifications of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Since we were a sponsor, the general sent this out to us. They're also going to try to assign an auction in place of the wrench drop. The... It's due with the pandemic. Hopefully, we have it ready in about a month, and there's some technical issues with the laser print with the little wrenches that they use as a fundraiser. But they'll get them out. And so I wish I had better news in spite of the pandemic, but let's make the best of the situation and have a successful event. So sincerely, General Westby, President of the Wrench Drop Committee. Those are the two pieces of correspondence we have, sir.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of council on November second, twenty twenty. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes as presented? I'll make that motion. Thank you, Mr. Pelman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agathon. Are there any comments, corrections, deletions or additions? There are none, but...
Unless we hear a negative response, I will record the vote as dismissed.
Thank you, and the minutes are approved. Okay, both boards liaisons. First of all, we'll talk to Mr. Booker here about the environmental advisory council.
Thanks. There is no meeting this month, so there is no report.
Thank you. And while you're on the deck, how about Harv?
Uh, so Harv reviewed two projects, and I think I'll just talk about them when they are actionized later on this meeting. Then they also discussed the Harvard wars, and there was also discussion enough possibly asking for more information when there's Harv approvals or if they're going to revise something and kind of do... I've seen it in Harvard that too.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Booker on either of those items? Here and now, we'll move on to the run rate here. Mr. Miller?
There's no report on the run rate of the applications.
Thank you. And while we're at it, you just qualified.
Okay. Last night, we held our November meeting for the municipal party, and they advertised the twenty-two one voluntary sewer budget and the twenty-two one stormwater budget. So far, the authority has collected seventy-seven thousand nine hundred eighty-eight dollars as of November sixth in the stormwater fees. And we're in the process to... managing the process of handling the appeals process to the stormwater fee, and there are a number of appeals that are going through that process. That's right, the bargains. The other thing we did last night that is of significance is that we decided to go virtual in December, and we will be holding a meeting, a December meeting, on soon. And the authority decided to include in its advertisement for twenty-twenty-one the option to go virtually. So here, we're holding that as an option for this year to do that. It is recommended in January, February, and hopefully not much longer than that. But it's important that we did that because it'll save us some additional advertising cost should we decide that we have to go virtual, that we advertise at the beginning of the year that is left each time we need to do it. Maybe a chunk for council to also consider. I'm sharing the report.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Bill? Here and now, we move on to the planning commission, Mr. Cummins. The October meeting of the planning commission was canceled as was this coming meeting of the planning commission, so there's no report. Thank you. Right wing board, Mrs. Agathon.
We met last week. We started our comprehensive plan development. I think we had a good start to that. Thank you for talking to Mr. Booker for being there, and thank you, Councilman Cummins, for his ideas. I think that you definitely are starting to share a vision and put some effort into directing our parks in a new direction. We also have met to start the signing of our hundredth anniversary of soldiers and sailors, which will be in August, sorry, August seventh. So we're going to be partnering with Don Con Partnership to do a community day together.
Very good. Any questions for Mrs. Agathon? Here and now, we'll move on to the shade tree commission, Mr. Booker.
There is no meeting this month, so there is no report.
Thank you. And school board, I have no report. So we move on to the managers' report. Oh, I have a report.
The guys have been out working on the map playground. They got a lot of stuff set up. We still have the bridge to take out there. I got a colleague there reminding me that they couldn't find the bridge out there, so we... It will be in. It's just a matter of me getting time to get out of the office and get out there with the guys, put it together. Also today, I met with... first of all, by conference call with the group that is on the Navy Joint Land Use Study with Hampton Township, the Navy. Cumberland County is now represented on there through the planning commission. Kirk Stoner and Jamie Keener from Cumberland County are also on there. One of the things that we talked about, one of the big things that I really wanted to talk about was the flooding issues we have at the Giant Store, Apple Drive, and Simpson Street, Spankies, and down the road where Clear Choice used to be. The Navy is willing to listen to us about putting something in. There are vacant lots that serve there behind the car dealership, and we've got to work with North Hook Saturday to get the water from our side of the tracks to the other side of the tracks. That seems... that's going to probably be the big hurdle, plus the PennDOT roads we're going... two PennDOT roads we're going across. So we're going to flip PennDOT into that group. Here, it's coming up shortly. We're trying to get that group together to discuss what we can do and try to make that area downtown a little safer as far as the water goes. So it's one of the first times the Navy has really let us, you know, listen to us and understand what the problem is, so... Part of the other one, something else that happened was I've been working on a capital improvement plan, and that's what this blue fire is here. It needs to be built down and put into a usable form, like I handed out to Councilman Booker and Councilwoman Everton tonight. They have their hard copies of it. That's a matter of just getting it all boiled down into one decent document. As everybody knows, I sent an email out about the hydraulic fluid leak we had around the downtown. That was cleaned up. The guys worked until almost dark on Thursday night, and then we're back out Friday morning, cleaned all that stuff up. It has been noted, the E P was out. They looked at it. They said we did what we could do. This is best. We have to show it on our M S four report at the end of the year, so that's taken care of. The truck meeting that we had with Sheriff Loser, Councilman Weber was involved in that. The general consensus is a big area that they're going to look at. PennDOT is going to look at a study to try to figure out what they can do with this. Unfortunately, with all the state roads in town and their stance on interstate commerce, it's a difficult situation. Sergeant Dyer and Chief Myers were also at that meeting. They attended at my office through the Microsoft Teams, and Sergeant Dyer asked if we could do bigger signs outside of town, you know, wherever they see them before they get in there. A lot of the times, the trucks he's stopping, you know, he has pictures of the sign on his phone, and they're like, "We never saw it," because it's a standard road sign that's there. A lot of them are following their GPS, so one of the other suggestions was we talk to the GPS people, whoever is the supplier for these, and the trucking companies to tell them that they are, you know, they're using the car navigation instead of truck navigation, which is two totally separate routes. We've known this, that they're using the GPS, and it's showing the car because we find trucks stuck in the baseball parking lot of the park. For some reason, they go down to Washington thinking they're going to X P O Logistics, and they can't get over the hill, so they're stuck in the parking lot, especially if there's a bolling law. So there's a bunch of moving cars. This is not going to be a quick fix, but it's going to be when everything is said and done. I know for the truck turns at the intersections, that took PennDOT a year, year and a half to look at six intersections. So this is going to be a while to do this. And if anybody was at the meeting, they heard my spiel that, you know, this is a small town that was designed to force a budget, not interstate trucks, and that's causing a major problem, especially on the state roads that are in here. They get off the state roads, they get on the backroads. As Councilman Miller alluded to, I was one of the appealists for the M S four or the stormwater assessment. I was out at Yale Street at the Church of the Brothers doing an appeal, and a fifty-three-foot truck went up Yale Street, realized that he couldn't go anywhere once he got to Charles, and proceeded to do a three-point turn. And I was taking pictures of him coming back through. They weighed that because they went by. And I was standing there with a brooch shirt on, the whole New Yorks, and, you know, but they were following GPS. And it got him in the residential neighborhood, so... Fortunately, this guy knew he was going to the truck. He didn't hit anything. A lot of times, we don't... Art don't work out that lucky. So that's, you know, it's going to be a long while to get that, those things addressed, and I know Chief knows that. The virtual meetings that Councilman Miller alluded to. You know, we're having an action agenda item later on that I'd like to add that to also for us. I'm not going to steal Nate's thunder. He's got a very lengthy report to do, so it's not as good as what it was in the spring. I'll just leave it at that, and Nate can elaborate more. As far as the leaf pickup goes, the ladies in the office are actually going out to help get the leaf collected. The cold snap we had over the weekend with the rain, it did help. Last year, we were picking up leaves a little bit at a time, the whole way through. This year, everything came down at one time. The two vacuum machines that we're using, we're going to actually make a job offer to a young lady that applied for a highway position. If she accepts, we're going to get her to work as soon as we can and get her trained on the machine and get her out working on that machine. And we're going to start using... we're trying to use the big truck. The problem with it is, as soon as they take the big truck out, everybody's complaining about the dust and stuff it makes. And it does. It puts out a lot of dust on top. So it's six and one half dozen of them. They complain the leaves aren't picked up, or they complain that their cars are covered with dust. So we've got a plan in place. We're doing what we can. They are out every day. One way or another, they're out every day trying to get everything they can get cleaned up, so that is my report.
Let us know the best complaints, because I'd like to talk to the people.
Good.
Because I mean, we have more complaints right now about the leaves not picking up, being picked up than...
Like I said, it's six and one half dozen of them. When we get that big truck out there and it's picking up leaves, it's blowing, because the top is great, and whatever leaves get rounded up, they're the wind, they hit the top of the thing, and they fly out the top. So, I mean, I saw... I was out there actually yesterday with the leaf blower, trying to give them a hand, moving stuff around, and it was covered with leaf dust as it was coming out of there. And I was out there for about twenty minutes at one spot. So it's a... we're working a long way to get that out of there. I'm also researching different ways. There's a company over in Harrisburg that actually makes a leaf vacuum truck that skeeps the loader on the back of another truck to use, and then you can swap. It's called a swap loader, where you can take it, set off, and put it on a dump bed, or put it on a flatbed, or whatever you want to use. I'm looking at where we can find some parts to, through grants or something like that, potentially get one of those. But it comes with a leaf unit that's actually bigger than the ones that we have, that the guy in the driver's seat uses as a control stick, and you don't have to have somebody else out. But it looks very similar to the old machines that we have. So one machine is actually broken down to the point they can't use it right now. It's requiring a part. The other one is the smaller one, and it doesn't work as well as what the big one did. But the big one is the old one.
Unfortunately, we have two leaf picker up early back.
We have two... we have two vacuums, but we have the base vacuum that's on the back of the trucks, and they're using it to try to get caught up, but it's not... it's not working as well as what it is. Plus, it's two people, where it's usually three, and that's why we're looking at hiring a third person to put in highway so that they can... they can get, you know, we can get a person out on the street also. This is the only application we received for the highway position, by the way.
Do you have a new report?
I did. I did my report now.
Thank you. Any questions? Other questions for Mr. Sizurski? There are none. We'll move on to the mayor's board.
Thank you. October twenty-two, Cozier Park looks good with the updated landscaping, and the rural park enshrined with mulch at the point. Twenty-nine, trip or treat with caution. November ninth, crime launches canceled. November eleventh, Sethon State Program at the Hansberg Senator with rain had a decent turnout. Two big questions. In the northeast corner of Allen and York Street, there's a metal fence constructed with many sections, all different. Why? That's interesting. This mass manufacturing company built fences, and they put these different sections up at that spot to show off the different types of fencing that they made. And that block that it's attached to is called the POTS block, after POTS manufacturing company. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Man. Chief, Chief report?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Solicitor's report?
I have none.
Thank you. Our chief report?
Our report was submitted.
Thank you very much. Anything to add?
Yes. I was up today, earlier today, forty-five minutes out of the record, just to mirror the state's recommendations and guidelines for the Florida man. So all members will be aware of insider and outlawing false training, etc.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Nancy Wardle?
Hello, everyone. I did email everyone on council on my reports before the meeting, probably around seven fifteen. I won't read the whole thing, but I did want to highlight a few parts of it. As of today, there are two hundred seventy-five thousand five hundred thirteen total cases of COVID- nineteen statewide and nine thousand three hundred fifty-five deaths. For perspective, as of October twentieth, our last meeting, our last second meeting of the month, there are one hundred eighty-four thousand eight hundred seventy-two total cases statewide and eight thousand five hundred thirty-three deaths. In Cumberland County, we have more than one thousand new cases in the last month. And as it go, there are six hundred ten positive cases, and our percent positivity has increased from six point... or from five point five percent in October to six point three percent today. The percent positivity for the county is at nine point two percent, where one month ago it was at four point five percent. The state's percent positivity is at nine point six percent, and we are clearly in dangerous waters in terms of the spread of the virus. Our cases are currently soaring. Hospitalizations are rapidly rising. In the spring, we keep at around three thousand people hospitalized statewide. Currently, we are at right around two thousand seven hundred fifty, and we expect to surpass three thousand by the end of the week. The other significant issue with our hospitalizations is during the spring, they were all in the southeast and northeastern part of the state primarily. Now, we are seeing hospitalizations occurring across the entire state, including a number of counties in which they are not prepared to handle the cases. Thirty-seven people are hospitalized with COVID- nineteen in Cumberland County. However, there is still plenty of capacity for ICU beds. At the beginning of November, however, only two weeks ago, the county was around thirteen people hospitalized with COVID- nineteen. The state will announce four mitigation steps today. These include requiring a negative test or quarantine when traveling out of state. It will refine the masking order to require masking anytime you are outside or inside with people who do not live in your households. There are recommendations for colleges and universities regarding testing, and then also for hospitals regarding elective procedures. That is all I have.
Nate, if I may ask a question just from my own personal... In that last statement, you said about requiring a negative test or quarantine when traveling out of state. How do you monitor that? I mean, somebody travels out of state and comes back home. How do you monitor that or make sure that they've gotten their test and/or quarantine?
So as with a number of the orders that have been issued by the Department of Health, the authority to issue them is under the Disease Control and Prevention Law. The actual enforcement is significantly more challenging, as in many of these are orders with the hope that Pennsylvanians will do what is right to protect one another. There is no way to send police officers to people's homes of somebody saying that, "Oh, my neighbor was out of town, so they must have been out of state." That's not the way that this is going to work. There's no way for that to easily work. And the department has ten attorneys, and we can't be running them all over the state, trying cases in every single county if this were... if we were to try to enforce it. There are some things that can be enforced through the law, but in reality, many of these... many of these orders are relying on Pennsylvanians to do the right thing.
You answered your question very well.
What is the state's stamp on testing centers, how they increase capacity for people, for individuals to get testing?
So there's a number of testing locations across the state. The state is working, the Department of Health is working through our contract with A M I to ensure that there is testing availability in places that need it. There's currently a testing site in Belair County that's actually testing more people than where our maximum is. And we're going to be rolling out some plans in December to try to work to increase our test capacity through those test sites that are moving from county to county. I know that there are some locations in which people are calling, trying to schedule a test, and there are no tests currently available because everything is booked. Those should be somewhat limited, but the more that I hear... the more that we talk about testing, the more I hear about that as an issue. We feel strongly that there is testing capacity out there. Our tests that we receive back are increasing almost every day. Last week, we had a day that we had more than fifty thousand PCR test results. There is also the antigen test cards. These are the ones that you literally... it's like a little matchbook pretty much, and you just fold it, wait fifteen minutes, and it will give you a test result. The department has been rolling those out to counties that have needed them the most, so counties with the highest percent positivities. Cumberland County has not received those yet, but they can be sent to any facility that has a CLIA certification, so any facility that is able to conduct tests in our zone. Some local long-term care facilities have the ability to do CLIA testing, and a number of colleges and universities do as well. There are some high schools that also have that capacity, but not many of them. So there are a number of avenues that we are continuing to work to increase testing, and then, of course, the next step on top of that, that's separate from testing, but will be the vaccine. And the latest conversation is that we should have a vaccine for phase one, which will largely be health care workers before the end of the year.
And one follow-up question. After passing it to ICU, how many ICU beds do we have in Cumberland County?
So I did not write down the number that we have, but I know we sort of have fifty-five percent of them available. So that would probably be around a hundred.
Thank you.
Hey, where do you... where do you list the number of positive cases in our zip code?
Yes.
Does that include over the entire... okay.
Yes, the six hundred ten. I don't know that I said the negative, but the negative is nine thousand six hundred and ten, I think.
Please say, please say. But that's going to be the entire length of this pandemic.
Yes, that's throughout the pandemic. Most of the numbers are cumulative. There are some numbers that we do have that are more just a seven-day picture, such as the percent positivity, but most of the numbers go average.
Thank you.
And that would include any long-term care facilities in the zip code that have cases.
Thank you. Any other questions for...
I can have one more, just a technical question. So I know about long-term care facilities are being hit hard, and the staff are being hit hard, too. When you guys show the percent of staff members that are in public, do you associate them with Cumberland County or where they live?
So they're counted... We have a chart that has... we have a PDF that has all of the counties, and then the number of facilities that have had cases in the county, the number of resident cases, the number of employee cases, the number of deaths. If there is a resident who lived in York County but worked in a long-term care facility in Cumberland County, they would be counted as a long-term care facility staff case in Cumberland County, but they would be counted... but they would be counted as a resident case in York County.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Conditions to be agenda?
Just a modification to the discussion of possible action advertised in the meeting notice for 2021 to add the potential to utilize a virtual meeting site if required so. And to add that discussion possible action to finish the calendar year of 2020 through the virtual meetings, as far as council meetings go.
All right, you want a motion to add that to the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Good, thank you. Mr. Booker, go ahead, do you have a second? That's pretty, that'll paint this one, thank you. All right, any other discussion?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
The motion carries. Approval of the agenda, would you like a motion, please? I'll make that motion, thank you, Mr. Coleman, a second. Sir Anthony got that one? Thank you. Any discussion?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Action items before Board Council, Mrs. Zerowski.
Action items before Board Council on November 17th of 2020. Discussion possible action on the certificate of appropriateness for Delicia Baker, 105 South Market Street for a 42-inch railing surrounding the patio.
Do I hear a motion?
Thank you.
And so will you, Miller, a second?
Sure.
That's Mr. Anthony, I believe. Any discussion?
I just wanted to, like I, I'm sure you guys saw the hard report, they're just, I don't know if you walked by Delicia, but it's looking great. And it's, the finishing step is adding the, the railing around there, I think it'll be nice and the hard, uh, recommend for approval as well.
Very good. Any other discussion? Here, now, Mr. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion possible action on the certificate of appropriateness for smoking pickles, 30 South Market Street for the addition of an outdoor patio.
I'm going to a motion.
I'll make that, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Booker, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any discussion?
I think they're doing a great job and following up today, seemingly walk down to the coffee shop for a coffee then.
It's not a long time waiting, then it's happening now, it's very good. Nice upgrade. Christine Bacon is looking in the window.
Yes.
I do love the way they're doing that.
This is for Pickles Bacon.
All right, is there any other discussion?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
Thank you, and the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion possible action on resolution 16 of 2020 setting the non-uniform pension contributions for 2021 as per the 158 labor contract.
Do I hear a motion? Salute. Thank you, Mr. Anthony, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarton. Any discussion? Here, now, Mrs. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries. Next item, please.
Discussion possible action to advertise the meeting notice for 2021 adding the potential the Board Council can use a virtual meeting set.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Agarton, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Booker. Any discussion?
Could, would each individual entity within the meeting advertisement have to decide whether they go virtual or not each month? Or could we also add the fact that each of one of the different committees in such can add the virtual?
We can, we can add that to the other committees. The other committees are recommending bodies to want the authority in the Board Council, so we can add that to them and basically council can direct them to meet.
I think it should go, if council decides to go virtual, I think it should go the same way for the committees.
Yes.
But if council's not virtual and they, and there are members that want to go virtual, they should have that option, so maybe mitigating circumstances.
Yeah, and then if we advertise council as going the, the virtual route, the other committees should follow suit, but they can, you know, if council decides to meet in person, the other committees can meet virtual. The record is a good one that could meet virtual and not have too much, it's not going to be too much of an impact for the planning committee. Uh, that could be a, a difficult one, but it depends on what's, what's on the docket for the planning commission too.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Mr. Martin?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
Thank you.
At this time, uh, I got one more, oh, sorry, I, I, discussion possible action to re-implement the Board Council meeting in the virtual format for the remainder of the 2020 year.
Do you want more motions? Salute. Thank you, Mr. Anthony, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other discussion on that?
There's one point, we have the solicitor interviews, the council could, and Lisa, you're going to have, oh, there she is. You could meet in person to do, conduct the interviews, it would be the Senator, Doodle, the mayor, and myself and the current solicitor. I think we could spread out in here far enough and, and the applicant, but if you're going to do interviews, we could do those in person or we could do those virtual also. Uh, that's entirely up to council to make that choice. We get, we should have all the RFPs back on Friday, then I would distribute them Saturday morning to council and then we could figure out at the first December meeting what we want, how we want to proceed with that.
If not agreed on, we're on.
I think it's okay if we have to introduce in person.
I think, I think they ought to do that, and that could be a special meeting, council.
Special meeting, a special session, different.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second, we have, had our discussion, is there any other discussion?
Unless I hear a negative response, I will report the vote as unanimous.
And the motion carries.
Okay, we're going to update to the website, I'll get, make sure the meetings are set up and we'll put a link out there for people to, to log into and get to. Actually, email me for the invite and I'll send it out to the.
Very good, thank you. We have now reached a point in our meeting for another opportunity for citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments? Here, now, is there any other business at this time? Mrs. Zerowski?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Just wanted to remind everybody, Doodles and Company dine out for the library tomorrow night. Take the things, you have to keep in mind that we're helping the library, but we're also helping restaurants that are, that are really hurting right now. And even though Doodles and Company's not in town, you know, it's, gives us an opportunity to help them and help the library at the same time. That's from 4:00 to 8:00 and that's at the Kango Shopping Center.
Thank you.
Well, just want to check in on the staffs of the personnel policy review, because I didn't know if everybody has a manager's report or.
Thank you. Uh, no, I missed it. Actually, I was back at the Labor Attorney's review for the second time. Uh, we've, I've just made some adjustments to it and I sent it back to him for his final review. Uh, the, the policy's been included and there's, there's little tweaks that we've been looking at. You should have, I'm hoping before the end of the year for your review.
Thank you. Booker?
Thank you.
Mrs. Agarton?
Thank you.
Solicitor?
I'm, I'm sorry. Nothing.
Thank you. All right, so I would like to announce that we are going to be adjourning to a mandatory session on that or personnel with possible action and we will be reconvening following that.